Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 8th Planning Commission meeting. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Shannon Roque.
Messina.
Here.
Clemming.
Here.
Ingalls.
Here.
Luttrell.
Here.
Mandel.
Here.
Rumpler.
Ward. Okay. Thank you again for coming. We do have one item this evening on the agenda. If you wish to speak on this particular item, there is a sign-up sheet that you can sign. And whether you do or don't want to speak, just check the box whether you're in favor or not in favor. And if you do wish to make some comments, please come up and let us know what you're thinking about. I appreciate that. Right now, we need approval of the June 13th and the July 11th workshop minutes. So if you can review those and...
I move to approve the minutes from the July 13th workshop.
I'll second that.
Okay. We also have the workshop was on July 11.
Yeah.
We have a first and second on the approval of July 13 minutes, and I need approval of the July 11th workshop.
I'll move on the June 13th to approve the minutes of June 13th. Planning Commission.
And so I have a motion to approve the minutes for June 13th and July 11th workshop. Do I have a second?
Second. That'll work.
Okay. Do you get that, Shannon? Thank you. At this time, we can have public comments, which would be anything other than the public hearing that we have tonight. If there's anyone that wants to make any public comments at this time? Nope? Okay. We'll move ahead to staff comments.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. So just a few updates for you. We have, as a reminder, on August 22nd, we have our workshop at 4:00 PM in this room to continue our discussion on our priority projects as adopted by the City Council with the work plan. So focusing in on the zoning code amendments that we talked about the last workshop, as well as talking more about the comprehensive plan update. So we have that. On September 12th is our regular meeting, and there will be a public hearing for the wireless communication ordinance update. And I think you all received that email with a video talking about small cell technology. So have that. And then also, just as an update related to the comprehensive plan update, Commissioner Mandel actually put us in touch with the city of Madison, Wisconsin, and their planning department is in the process of updating their comprehensive plan and doing a lot of really cool public outreach and incorporating data and things that are in line with our discussions. So we're having a conference call with them tomorrow. So we'll be able to report back at the workshop.
All right. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll start the public hearing, and we do have one public hearing, and it is the applicant is the city of Coeur d'Alene. Excuse me. The location of the property is 3074 West Seltice Way, the old Atlas Mill site. The request is a proposed 46-plus minus acre annexation from County Industrial to City, C-17. And this is a legislative issue, and it's item number A2-17. And before I start the public hearing on this, I just want to point out, we did receive a letter from a Chet Goudy. I apologize if that's not the right pronunciation of his name, but it is from the Friends of the Spokane River Corridor, and it is a two-page letter. I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that that was received by us, and it's available to be reviewed by contacting the city and staff, I imagine. Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Olivia.
Okay, great. Thank you, Sharon Messina. So, as you already mentioned, the applicant is the city of Coeur d'Alene in this request for zoning prior to annexation. It is the Atlas Mill site, and I'll give an example of where that's located on the next slide. But I did want to point out on this as well that the owner of the site is Bad Axe LLC. So the city is actually in the process of due diligence, looking at purchasing this property, this approximately 46-acre piece of property. And so it's a little unusual that the city is the applicant, but as part of the purchase and sales agreement, the city has entered into this agreement, saying, "We will be the applicant to move forward into this annexation process." And so I'll go through the process of describing the request this evening, and then I will be happy to answer any questions. So... Oh, and I should mention on this first slide as well that the requested zoning is C-17, commercial at 17 units per acre. So the location is shown here on the screen. So it is located north of the river, west of Riverstone, south of Seltice, and then east of the vacant property. That was the Washington Trust annexation a few years back. So, as I mentioned, we're in that purchase and sales agreement, the due diligence timeframe for purchasing the property. And so this timeline helps kind of give an overview of what we're doing. The city and Ignite CDA, which is the city's urban renewal agency, are working on this together to evaluate if it makes sense for the city to purchase the property. And so Ignite, as part of that, is working on financial feasibility to make sure if the sale goes through, that ultimately they would buy the property from the city, and then they have more authority to be able to have it redeveloped. It is considered a blighted property, so it fits well with kind of the urban renewal laws and redevelopment. The, as you can see on this next one, so there's two closing dates specified in the purchase and sales agreement, and those, there's two different price tags for that. The first one is, is it $150,000 less than the second one, I believe, Mike? So the second one would be December 1st. So that's the last date if we want to close on the property, and that would be $8 million December 1st. If we go through with that, then the Ignite CDA would continue the urban renewal efforts, and that would be to do the planning, to look at potentially creating a new urban renewal district for a portion of the property, and then expanding an existing the river district. And then in 2018, they'd continue working on purchasing property from the city, and then we would do community visioning, to hear from the community what they'd like to see for the public portion of the project, the open space, recreation trails, waterfront access, et cetera, as well as master planning. So we have completed all the legal notice requirements. This is typical for any of our public hearing items. And so we did place signs on the site in two locations, just to make sure the community knew that this was happening. And we also did the required notices in the Coeur d'Alene press. This photo just zooms in a little bit more to show you where the site is, and you can see some of the interesting topography on the site. Through here as well, this unusual shape is the former railroad right-of-way that the city purchased in 2014, and that is zoned C-17 already. So the mill site, it was actually founded in 1909, the Atlas Mill was, and it was in operation until 2005, at which time the city lost about 120 living wage jobs. And so it has sat vacant since 2005 for 12 years. And there have been a variety of developers that have looked at purchasing the property, and they have come upon some hurdles. And so it came to our attention that maybe this could be an opportunity to look at purchasing it and doing something different, having the city and Ignite partner together on acquiring this and making sure that we can ensure that there is some public access to the waterfront and have some opportunities for recreation, parkland, and some other land uses that are desired and wanted in the community. This is the subject property in 1999, and so as you can see this slide compared to the previous, that the mill site actually was on the adjacent property as well. It was not just on this subject 46 acres that we're looking at buying. And annexation history, there's been several annexations that have taken place around this property. The most recent one, as I mentioned, was the railroad right-of-way. So we did this one and then the other portion of railroad right-of-way. And then up here, this one, the triangular piece along Seltice Way, was completed in 2014. And then 2013 is the one to the west, that Washington Trust piece. So the subject property, it's currently in the county. It's zoned industrial, and it is just sitting vacant. It's been remediated to a large degree, and they've moved some piles of dirt and rock and some wood waste materials around, and I'll show you photos of that. But this is the existing zoning, and it is surrounded by primarily C-17, which is that commercial use. And then a little bit of the R-12, the residential at 12 units per acre. And then down here is R-17, which is the 17 units per acre. Proposed zoning is C-17, as I mentioned, for the entire site. So with an annexation request, there are four findings that must be made in order to approve an annexation or to deny an annexation, and so I'll walk you through those this evening. So the first is finding B8, and that's finding that it is in conformance or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. And so this subject property falls within the Spokane River District, and then it also is identified as a transition area. So the river district is largely was sites like this, that were mill sites that have been transitioning from mill sites or vacant land to more of mixed-use types of development that are along the waterfront, and that really does have kind of a mix of the residential, commercial, relates to Seltice Way, relates to the existing uses that are out there. You know, Riverstone is the same situation where that's being developed along another archeryal. It's a transition area. We have a lot of that in the city where it's expected to change over time, and so we just have to evaluate what's appropriate for sites as they are developed. There are four comprehensive plan goals that are applicable to the annexation request. So the first is related to the natural environment. Second is the economic environment. Third is the home environment, and then lastly is administrative environment. So these are all from the comprehensive plan. And there are actually 28 objectives that are included in the staff report that really also relate to that. So I'll just touch on some of the ones that are most related, and I took little excerpts from that. And so there's two related to waterfront development, to make sure that there is ample access for the public to the waterfront, also to protect and preserve vistas and corridors, view corridors, as well as the actual true access to the waterfront. Those are both tied to this. Community design, to make sure that sites are designed and developed appropriately, and also to make sure there is that pedestrian access and usability. And then also tied to community design is really looking at the natural terrain. So what does the site look like? What's the topography, the natural terrain, some of the characteristics with the plant materials, et cetera? How should that be incorporated into the development? Parks and recreation and open spaces all tie together, and so this is heavily weighted in the comprehensive plan, just saying to make sure we're providing enough open space, providing parkland, providing connectivity, and also partnering for opportunities to create maybe some open space that maybe someone else can take care of in the future, just to save some resources for the city. Again, I mentioned connectivity on the previous slide, but it's important as well to tie the connectivity between land uses in development and make sure that the pedestrians and the bicycles can get between land uses. And then making sure, again, you know, that it's designed appropriately so that you can walk to your destination. And then the transportation one is not only for motorized, but again, it talks about the other modes of transportation. Neighborhoods is critical, is to really protect existing neighborhoods, but also to plan new neighborhoods appropriately, and then to make sure that there's an appropriate transition of land uses, so you're not surrounding residential with industrial or having it so that it's an island of residential surrounded by commercial. Again, to make sure that we're listening to our citizens, what is, you know, what are the needs and desires of the citizenry? That's related to city services. And then project financing is important on this one, since we're looking at purchasing it. So managing our own city resources, but also an outside agency, which in this case would be Ignite. The business image and diversity, and then these other two are really related to making sure that we are providing opportunities for businesses and workforce in our community. And so this site, again, 46 acres is prime for creating some opportunities for job creation, and then partnering with Ignite, as well as Jobs Plus, Jobs Plus, excuse me, which is now the Coeur d'Alene Area Economic Development Corporation. Also, with the comprehensive plan, this site is unique in that it has this entire stretch of the project is along the shoreline. And so it falls within that shoreline area of the comprehensive plan. And in the comprehensive plan, it acknowledges that the city is known for its shorelines and that they are an asset, and that they provide a multitude of benefits, community pride, economic advantages, transportation, recreation, and tourism, and that public access and enhancement of the shoreline is a priority, and that they must be protected. So as part of that as well, we have the shoreline ordinance. And so this property is subject to that in these two colored areas on the slide. So the green area is the 40-foot shoreline no-construction zone, and so that's intended to be kept to more natural, can do some erosion control and things like that. The area, the 150-foot shoreline boundary, is more for the height restrictions, to make sure that there are the view corridors and other things. And there's some setbacks and other provisions, and that is a component of our zoning code. And then we also have a shoreline policy in the comprehensive plan that states we need to make public access to the river and lake shorelines a priority. Related to the comprehensive plan, there were some things that happened in 2013 and 2014. The city actually formed an ad hoc advisory committee, so that was the Spokane River Corridor Advisory Committee, and they were tasked at looking at the river corridor from Riverstone to Hutter, to say what should happen. We have obviously these kind of vacant sites that were former mill sites. How should this area be developed? What are things they need to consider related to public access, trails, you know, preservation of the shoreline, et cetera? So that took place in 2013. They studied the area for six months, met several times, came back and made recommendations to the city council, and the city council created a resolution. They adopted a resolution in 2014 that said just that, that they are directing staff to work to acquire more waterfront for public access and to do master planning of the riverfront. And then also, as noted in the staff report and included as attachments, there are six action items from the Coeur d'Alene 2030 implementation plan that directly tie to this as well, talking about the parks, recreation, access to the waterfront, views, and corridors. There's additional ones we didn't include in here, but there's other things supporting job creation and partnering with our Jobs Plus and the EDC, as I mentioned, and Ignite. Finding B9 is that the public facilities and utilities are available or are not available and adequate for the proposed use. And so we did have all the departments look at this proposed annexation as we normally do, and so they all provided some feedback. That's in the staff report, and I'll talk about those quickly, but no one had any major concerns or any objections, and they all indicated that there were utilities and services available. The first one that obviously came up at a previous public hearing, and we're all aware of the Seltice Way Revitalization Project that's underway currently. And so these are some images from the city's website. The project is under construction. This is the eastbound traffic, or eastbound lane, I should say, and we're looking at completion in 2018 of that. And so that is major revitalization. You can see on this image here, just showing what are the different users that are accommodated in the revitalized corridor. And so that will be, there's going to be a shared-use path, landscape buffer with the street trees. There will be a buffered bike lane, and then there will be the two travel lanes, and then there will be roundabouts in two locations. Wastewater master plan, there is the plan for this area. It's within the Hutter. Let me find the specific things. I'm sorry, the Mill River lift station area for how this would be serviced with sewer. And so it would need to drain to the west to connect in this location, and this is the Edge Water at Mill River. And then there's also opportunity, if a developer can show that they could maybe do it in a different manner and not create any burden to the wastewater system that they might be able to connect in other locations. There is some wastewater infrastructure along the Centennial Trail to the east of the project site. The, and then water is also available in Seltice Way. There's an eight-inch main on the south side, as well as in Suzanne Road, which is in Riverstone. So I'll go back. And there's a 12-inch main that's stubbed to the end of that road. So this is the wastewater master plan, but just to show you that here's where there's also additional water infrastructure. The Trails and Bike Way master plan, this was just adopted earlier this year, and there are some trails shown through the site, as well as connections up to Seltice Way. In addition to the Centennial Trail, there's the Prairie Trail that continues this direction. And then the other unique thing in this year's Trails and Bike Way master plan is the thing called the water trails. And I believe you guys heard the presentation on that previously, that, so it's more for kayaking and paddle boarding. It's water sports, so it wouldn't really be people walking or biking in those locations. There are also some policies that relate to this in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and I should also mention, I have, we have staff here and directors for the various city departments, if you have any technical questions on any of this. Finding B9 is that the physical characteristics of the site do or do not make it suitable for the request at this time. And so this shows the topography of the site. You can see that there are a lot of lines, white lines going on. And as we note in the staff report, we, based on our mapping, thought it was just a 45-foot grade difference across the site, but Welch Comer just completed their preliminary topography survey map, and it looks like it's actually 55 feet across the site. And so this shows, you can see really kind of the mounting of where some of those piles are from when they remediated after the mill site was closed. The site is also, has some of it along the shoreline, and then there's a little inlet, and then another little area that is dug out on the site, and those are within the floodplain area. So some photos, just kind of giving you a perspective of the site. So this is Riverstone and the Dog Park and the Centennial Trail. This is looking south, the river's here, and this is on the east boundary of the subject property. This is another one that's more centrally located, looking south. These are some of those piles where they've separated the materials. And then this is that former railroad right-of-way that the city owns. This is looking, so this is on the western boundary. There's a fence here that delineates the property line, again, some piles of materials. This is looking at where the Atlas Roundabout will be constructed. So that's what the arrow denotes. This is a little bit more central, looking north. The Stimson Office Site is up on this hill. This is kind of turning around, looking back at the river and the hill. And then this is, again, this is the western boundary, and this is the railroad right-of-way the city owns. Turned around, kind of looking east now. Here's the river, some more material. And then this is a close-up of the railroad right-of-way. And then this is a natural inlet. So when you saw that floodplain map, it includes this, and then on the other side, just west, or I guess it's just north of the railroad right-of-way is another area that's dug out that's included in that floodplain currently. So the finding B11 is the last finding, and that is that the proposal would or would not adversely affect surrounding neighborhood with regard to traffic, neighborhood character, and/or existing land uses. And so we just, again, have the different departments weigh in on this, and our city engineer, Chris Bosley, said that it would not adversely affect any of the roads or the neighborhoods from traffic increases, and that Seltice Way has adequate capacity or will, especially with the revitalization to handle that traffic. The generalized land use, we talked before about this a little bit. So to the west is that Washington Trust site, vacant still. And then here's the other one, the same owner, the Rivers Edge LLC owns these two. They're both vacant currently. Subject property, the railroad right-of-way. And then you can see here, these are some vacant uses, some resident, single-family residential is the bright yellow. We have some multifamily development, and the red is commercial. And then again, on the north side of Seltice Way, there's commercial and single-family and some manufacturing and vacant over here. So as proposed, the C-17 zoning district, it's our most broad commercial zoning district, and it allows a variety of different uses, as well as mixed-use projects and residential at that 17 units per acre. And so lastly, just wanted to share with you, staff did include some considerations for city council of items that they may want to include in the annexation agreement, and these are things that have kind of come up as we've been evaluating the site and other things that maybe the community has said. So just to let them consider what maybe they might want to include in the annexation agreement, because we aren't sure who's going to ultimately develop it. And so this is kind of a protection measure, and the annexation agreement is a great tool to kind of solidify some of those things that the community wants. And so there are 10 in the staff report. So these are the first four, and some of these talk about the PUD, the Planned Unit Development, and that would require that they do some master planning and then kind of design the site, as well as provide that 10% open space. And so that's how PUD works. And PUD is also required to do docks or marinas, and so Riverstone and Mill River, those projects were approved as planned unit development projects so that they could get the docks and marinas along the shoreline. Otherwise, a shoreline ordinance has restrictions on that construction activity. And then Department of Lands also would be involved in doing any permits for that. And then there's also been some discussion about, should there be a maximum density for multifamily? So the C-17 has the 17 units per acre, but it allows someone to request that R-34 special-use permit, which increases the density to 34 units per acre. So something for council to consider, should that be kept at 17 units per acre? Could also reduce the single-family, if there is any of that, to say what, what do they want in terms of density? Also, you know, considering that, should there be a minimum acreage for the parks and open space area within the project, and to include that in the annexation agreement, as well as should there be a certain amount that's developed initially? Because I know a lot of our PUD projects, you know, open space comes up frequently, and you want to make sure you have some open space, you don't wait till the very end and then complete the open space. And then also, any of the connections through to other adjoining properties, the cities, as I mentioned, that Trail and Bike Way master plan, we want to have an east-west trail connecting through to the property of the west, as well as to the Centennial Trail and a Riverstone. And so again, specifying, we want to have trail connection, and then a minimum of 12 to 13 feet wide of asphalt. As well as the last three are just kind of talking about, should we maybe ensure that there's land for job creation? And that's something that might be important to consider. Also, saying if we don't do the PUD process to make sure that the plaits do show the shoreline restrictions and those setbacks, as well as the floodplain, is important to make sure that's denoted for future development, so. The decision point before you this evening is really related to that zoning prior to annexation, but it's also the other findings that are recommendations to the city council on whether to annex this property or not. And so you're really being asked if that C-17 zoning is appropriate for the project. And then your action alternatives are to approve, deny, or deny without prejudice. That's all I have. Thank you.
Got a question or two.
Yes.
And I'm sure there might be a few here. So we're talking just zoning tonight, what our charge is here. And then if you can explain perhaps to us, as well as the general public, the procedure after it goes from here, a C-17, whether it's approved or not, it goes to city council at some point for annexation?
That's correct, yes. So yours this evening is you're looking at the zoning, is that appropriate? And then making the other findings related to, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? Are the facilities and utilities adequate to serve the project? Those kind of things. And the natural characteristics, is that appropriate? And that goes to city council. There will be another public hearing with city council in September. It would be the second meeting in September, where they would see your recommendation and findings, and then they would hold a new public hearing and receive public testimony and decide, do they want to annex it or not, and decide if they think the C-17 zoning is appropriate. They'll also review those recommendations, and if there's any additional ones for consideration in that annexation agreement. Once, if the council decides to annex the property, then they would go forward, and the annexation agreement would be drafted, and the annexation ordinance gets recorded. That's how a project ultimately gets into the city limits. Now, it's possible, though, if we decide not to go through with the sale, that the current owner may decide she doesn't want to have the property annexed into the city at this time. So that is something that is to be determined, but the normal process is, yes, it goes planning commission first, city council for the public hearing, and then the annexation agreement and ordinance come back for the city council to review.
So it doesn't come back here for annexation?
No.
It goes from here, our recommendation for C-17, with the recommendations that are in the packet that goes along with that, to city council, our, not our recommendations, but we are recommending those recommendations that the city council should, could do a PUD, and I don't know if the general public have seen those or not, but there's about 10 of them in there. So that's the procedure. And when it goes back to city council to look at what our decision is, would they also do the annexation at the same time? Approve the C-17 and annexation at the same time? Approve the C-17 and annexation at the same time? Or is there another meeting for annexation separate?
It'd be all at one meeting?
Okay.
For them to have the public hearing and decide all of that. And then, as I was saying, you'd, we would draft the annexation agreement and the ordinance, and those would come back to them at a subsequent meeting. And that finalizes it. Once they approve the annexation agreement and ordinance, those get recorded, and then it becomes official.
And then the purchase agreement with the city to purchase the land, would that start then, once city council approves the C-17 and the annexation? Would that start, let's say, the real estate portion of purchasing the land at that time?
No, the thought is, we want to get through the two public hearings on annexation before the October 25th deadline. And ultimately, we'd really like it, is it October, or what's our date for? October 25th is for the first purchase date. And there's a timeframe before that in terms of if we're going to decide we don't know yet, we may lose our earnest money if we aren't, you know, totally sure. We would lose that potentially. But if we decide to go through with the purchase, the first date would be October 25th, the second date and the last date would be December 1st.
Okay.
So it's possible, so we would have that second public hearing with city council, and they'd agree to annex it if they do decide that. But the agreement and the ordinance wouldn't be official yet.
Okay, fine. And my understanding also, if it isn't annexed into the city, we couldn't do any real improvements on it because the utilities are in the county and stuff, as well as IGNITE CDA, the Urban Renewal Agency, couldn't participate in the project if it wasn't annexed into the city as well. So those all have to kind of flow together. My other question is, we certainly learned from Riverstone how to protect the shoreline and stuff, and I believe we've had this conversation amongst us here on the council. So, and I, and I, from just the sign-up here, I've got to adjust of what we'll hear from the general public here shortly. But we've learned over time, I think the city has too, this is a pristine piece of property that we do have to look at closely. And so hopefully, we will do that, and I'm sure the city will, and I know this commission will as well, as far as what we can do tonight. The other question I have, as an individual and not a person on the commission, is what is the intent for the city besides keeping public land as much? But it is C-17, which allows, let's say, a hotel or other structures and residential, selling off some of that property. And I don't know if you can or can't answer that, or maybe Mike from legal can. Is the intention of the city to keep all the property, or perhaps they might have to sell some of it, or they couldn't sell some of it? Could you touch on that a little bit at this time?
I can, certainly. And then Mike Ridley is welcome to jump in as well. So the thought is that, yes, some of the site is going to have to be developed for sure to make it work out financially. And a portion would be dedicated for parks and open space and waterfront access and trail connections and all of that. The C-17 just made the most sense initially as kind of if we're just doing one zoning to allow master planning to occur later versus us coming in now and carving it up and saying we want, you know, whatever we want, C-17L here and C-17 here and R12, you know? It just makes more sense. But that's where we were saying in the annexation agreement, that it might help to have some limitations or require that planned unit development process, maybe limit the density so that we have a little more assurance of what the project will look like. The, I think, what was your other question related to the development? The city won't be developing it, it'll ultimately be IGNITE purchasing it, and then they'll have the ability to sell it off.
To sort of answer Tom's question, is the city's intent to sell the property in total to IGNITE Cordelane?
Yes, that is the intent.
The city will, the city owned it for a period of time, but certain things will happen, will transpire, and then IGNITE Cordelane will buy it.
That's correct. I don't know in terms of, I guess it depends on the timing and how the open space and parkland and whatnot is determined, but that may end up being, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I might speak to that a little bit. I think, as Hillary stated earlier, this is a classic Brownfield site. It's a site for an old mill that's been sitting there for a number of years vacant and just been overgrown with weeds and not been used. And prospective buyers have looked at it, and for various reasons, they've struggled with trying to put a deal together. And so I think one of the city's main goals is to create an opportunity for development that will include job creation. And so my understanding of the city's plan is to facilitate the acquisition, sell it to IGNITE, transfer it to IGNITE. We'll be able, as with any seller, put some restrictions on what we want out of that sale and requirements, what we want, we, the public, want out of that sale. And then IGNITE, as an urban renewal agency, will have some freedom and the ability to then work with the private sector to do whatever works or what will be the best fit for our community. There may be some residential, but I think one of the big goals is to replace jobs, maybe a campus, maybe a tech campus. I think Kootenay Health has expressed some interest in medical facility type stuff down there. So I think it's, we create a canvas that will be a successful place for somebody to create job creation, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I have a follow-up question, if I can ask it properly. Mr. Ridley is very, it's honorable to have him here, so I may stumble through my question. My, one of my questions, issues are, if we approve this zoning as C-17, as requested, the property owner gets the benefit of that zoning? And the property owner is Bad Axe or somebody like that, whatever the property owner's name is. Is there anything that can transpire if we do approve the annexation and the zoning? Is there anything that could possibly result in the final annexation and zoning going strictly to the current owner, the current owner, not to IGNITE Cordelane or not to the city?
Well, that would presume that the deal with the city falls through and that the Bad Axe, the owner currently wants to go forward. That has to go through the city council process for an annexation. City council can say, all right, Bad Axe, you're here, we'll annex you, here's our conditions. I think we retain a lot of control, no matter how this plays out, because, you know, we have the planning commission and ultimately have city council. You know, it is an unusual situation. City is usually not the applicant, usually not in this position. But if planning commission did something we didn't like, we could appeal your decision to city council kind of thing. So it's, I think there's a lot of protections.
So if the transaction falls through, then the zoning will fall through?
Yes, that, well, the applicant, well, we're the applicant, so yeah, we would, now, Bad Axe could come back to you guys and say, hey, we want to make another run at it. But we're the applicant in this, and if this doesn't work for us, then they would start over.
Thank you.
So to confirm the recommendations that are, that Hillary listed for the annexation agreement, which is not what we're discussing or determining tonight, those could get passed forward to the sale from the city to IGNITE?
Right. The annexations agreements are typically negotiated with the owner of the property, would be the city, or IGNITE. And it is an odd situation, but the annexation agreements get recorded, become a record with the property, and they transfer to each owner, subsequent owner.
Thank you.
John?
Thank you. Question, I think, is Hillary for you and Mike maybe as well, but you kind of set the stage a little bit before we hear some testimony. Chairman, you mentioned Riverstone Development. And looking back on that and in context, you know, there's a lot of interest and, you know, there's an opportunity with Riverstone, I guess, to say, you know, some of it's great, some of it, maybe we could have done better, is kind of the sense I got there. So laying the stage to really do it well this time. And I'm looking at the letter that we received from the Friends of the Spokane River Corridor. And besides the question of the zoning, which is one of their key points, the other refers to that map right there and says, you know, the property that we already own, the city already owns, down all the way to the river, let's, let's keep that, you know, pretty much guaranteed, unlike a Riverstone. Maybe we don't want restaurants and condos along there or something like that. So is it, is it too restrictive at this point in your mind to wrestle with that and say that that ought to be a recommendation to the council, that that be adopted? That is a condition. How would the city feel? How would you all, as you've collaborated on this thing to this point, feel about a condition that goes beyond, you know, 10 acres of open space in general somewhere and applies it to that riverfront strip from, you know, what we own now to the river? To say that that's going to be protected and owned by the city? And then one other point that they make in there is, is that there ought to be a comprehensive planning process. And it looks to me like with what you painted upfront with a, you know, community visioning, master planning that is, you know, in there as a recommendation, that that comprehensive planning process element is kind of covered. But can you speak to the strip along the river a little bit?
Yes, I'll kind of show where Mr. Gady was saying. So he was saying everything from here down to the river, they'd like to have that be part of that.
I think that's at least one of the elephants in the room tonight.
Right. And I, you know, the recommendations that we've included in there, the council can say we love them all, or we want to modify them or not. So I think, you know, anything that the commission thinks should be addressed, I think it is appropriate, again, as a recommendation to say, we'd like you to consider this because it's, you know, what you either hear from the community or what you yourselves have heard with tonight's presentation. I think it is appropriate for you to say if there's things you want to be considered.
We can make recommendations in our findings tonight, based on whatever the general feel is.
Right.
Let me ask it just a little bit differently.
Okay.
Is if the recommendation from up here was that, you know, the existing strip of property that's owned, that used to be the BNSF strip, plus from there to the river, was incorporated into a recommendation that council adopted to make that protective and public-owned? Would that threaten the business model and viability of making this thing work?
That is being looked at in terms of, with the financial feasibility that IGNITE's doing right now, where they're kind of looking at, okay, what are some hypothetical uses that make sense? They're kind of coming up with a conceptual plan to say, how is this going to pencil? So I don't know if, it kind of just depends. I don't think, they don't have all the numbers yet to be able to do all the number crunching to make sure. So I'm not sure, I mean, you could put it as a recommendation, but it's, it does have to make sense at the end of the day too financially for the city and IGNITE to move forward with the purchase. But if it was worded in such a way that that would be the preference of the commission or however you want to word it, to say to evaluate, you know, the viability of incorporating the land use in that way.
So we can make recommendations, and whether the recommendations would go forward in the final annexation agreement, that's up the city council to do, just like the 10 recommendations that are here in our package. Again, that can either be part of the annexation agreement or not. So I think we have the flexibility to add or not add something at this point and see where it goes, if that's a comfort level for this commission. Mike, you want to say something?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner, or Chairman. Yeah, I think that's part of your job. It's your, the conscience or the eyes of the community and look at things like this and pass on those recommendations from your perspective. The one thing I might add is, in working with the 2030 project with Stephen Ames and with, we have had other planning experts tour the river, tour our community, you know, they love it. One of the things I've emphasized is the need for what they call third places, places other than where you work or where you live, where you can gather, whether it be a brew pub or whether it be a restaurant or whether it be a whatever, that the community can come to. Even in our parks, we see some space left for some commercial activity that people want to use. They want to get something to eat, drink, rent a paddleboard, whatever. So I think the C-17 is the, is the broadest zoning, obviously, but it gives more flexibility for us to look at using these other options and incorporating other features that the community wants. Ultimately, I think this will be driven by the voice of the community. So that's, that's all I have to say about that. But anything you want to recommend, certainly council will get a chance to weigh that, incorporate it as appropriate.
Now, I understand, I think, you know, when we say open space is one thing, if you say open space being grass and park benches and such, there's sometimes a interpretation what open space is, and we struggled with that before. And then if you have a restaurant that is close to the water, as some are in Riverstone right now, I mean, that's enjoyable for the public to get to and enjoy. I think there's another side of it of, I think, you know, we just don't want, not don't want, but perhaps just residential right on the shoreline where we go like, hey, I have no open space rights here. And my feeling, and hopefully whatever input I can do with this whole annexation down the road and stuff, would not to let that happen to, to a full extent, and having it more of a public, open space area. And that's why I mentioned, I think we have learned from, and nothing in a negative way, but from Riverstone. Riverstone is a good project, but as some of the other commissioners might have said, you know, we could have done a little better, perhaps. And that came to us with a developer who had a grand scheme of greatness, you know, 10 years ago. And that was a developer, and Mike, as you said, this is a unique situation that the city is coming forward. And we're kind of in control at this point, which is a good thing, I believe, for the city. And hopefully, you know, the public and we'll hear from the public and stuff. Do we have any other questions of Hillary?
Maybe of Mike. You mentioned Brownfield. Is there any responsibility, any, anything we assume, the city assumes with pollution on that site, once it becomes, once we buy it, once it's annexed?
Clean up?
Well, as a property owner, we would take on, you know, some of that. We have been working closely with our partners at DEQ. They're doing.
You answered my question. There's been discussion on that, and you worked, very good. That's, that's.
That's part of our due diligence. We were finding what we're buying. But the mill, you know, the mill was owned by Stimson Lumber Company, and there was a contract with the Marshall Chesron to buy it. And so they took the mill down, pulled the foundations out, ground up the concrete, dug up some petroleum products, and worked with DEQ to get it ready to go. Because that was one of the provisions in Chesron's purchase contract was, it's got to be clean, it's got to be ready to go. So we have pretty high level of confidence that there's no big surprises out there and that the environmental condition is.
And those piles of gravel or dirt, or is that included in that study?
Yeah, those are, a lot of that is the ground-up foundations and footings from the mill that was there. So the concrete got ground up, is actually good stuff for structural fill. There is some log waste type stuff and things like that, but there's no evidence of toxic, you know, PCB storage or, or that kind of thing.
So we have a pretty good idea what the contaminants are?
Yeah, I think so. I know, it's not been a, something that we've been concerned with, and we're still completing the due diligence, and that'll be done before our September 15th deadline for deciding whether to pull the trigger on it, the purchase or not.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to clarify something as well that I should have pointed out when I was talking about the Trails and Bike Way Master Plan. Also in the staff report, Parks had commented, just saying some other uses that they have heard from their commission as well as the public for this site. And so that might also be something you'd want to consider adding in as recommendations for the annexation agreement. And those are that it could provide a regional park, and that it could have public access points, water access, a beach park, an accessible non-motorized boat launch, an accessible swim area with a jetty, a dog water park, and water inlet, as well as obviously public parking is required for a large park, and then street trees. So those are some things. And then one other thing, when you were talking about Riverstone and some other things, it made me remember when the River 47 group was looking at this site before, one of the other developers, they had had kind of a mixed-use component somewhere in this area where it was, they had public docks you could boat up, and it would be kind of restaurants and different types of mixed-use development. And that's something that had. And that's something that has been, we've heard that from other people, as well as some staff, saying, wouldn't that be nice? So maybe there was some component of mixed use as well. Again, if that's something the commission would like to throw in as a recommendation for consideration for council, just wanted to bring up those two items.
Okay. Anything else? Just to get this right, we'll open up the public comments for the people who signed up, but they'll have a few minutes to speak. And then Hillary, you can come back and answer any questions again if some arise again. All right, thank you. Okay, the first person I have is Steve Gill. And Steve, you did not indicate whether you're in favor or not, anything, so if you want to come up, you can just state your name and address, that's all I ask, and I'm sure you'll tell the truth.
Yes, I'm Steve Gill, and I'm 2110 Ironwood Parkway. I work for the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality. I'm just here in support of this work. I've been working with both Mike and Hillary on this for the last, well, since May of this year. So we are helping them with due diligence, and you will see our Phase 1 environmental site assessment report before the September 15th meeting.
All right, great, thank you. I have Abbev Moss, and she does not wish to speak, and she is opposed to it, but in her, she said to the zoning, so I just wanted to mention that. The next person I have is Susan Marshall, and again, she does not wish to testify, and she is in favor, but not for the zone as C-17, which she wrote down on this. The next person I have is Terry Godbout. I'm sorry if I mispronounced that.
Oh, excuse me.
Okay. Didn't indicate whether or not you want to testify or not, but you are in favor, but to a zone of R1. Correct me if that's not what you wrote in here.
That's correct, and I don't need to testify, but I'd like to give my-
If you want to testify, you can come up to the mic. Or you don't want to testify, that's fine.
Can I give my three minutes to-
You can, well, come on up to the mic and... Just take your name and your address, please.
Okay, Terry Godbout, 312 Forest, Coeur d'Alene. I'd like to give my three minutes, or whatever it is, to Chet Gady.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next person, we have Susie Snattercar. She would like to testify, and she checked if you're, if I see this right, in favor.
Well, yes and no. Mr. Chairman, due to the smoke in the air, my breathing is a little off. It may take me a little bit to get through this, but-
Take your time.
Please bear with me.
Okay.
Commissioners, thank you. A couple of years ago, several people testified, oh, Susan Snattercar, City of Coeur d'Alene. A couple of years ago, several people testified regarding the importance of the pristine Spokane River shoreline to not only, the importance of it to not only present residents, but also future generations, which I view as a legacy. Little did I know that the city would have the option to purchase this exceptional piece of property. The issue before you is one of zoning prior to annexation and a recommendation for that annexation. While I understand the process and recommended zoning, I would prefer R1 for the entire parcel to accepting, entire parcel to accepting a well-thought-out, well, I don't know what I did on that. I would prefer an R1 for the entire parcel prior to accepting a well-thought-out master plan, one that mandates preservation of a public shoreline and that achieves adopted planning goals. That master plan would evolve from an outstanding design competition entry. Think of it this way, start strict and tighten up later. You can always loosen it up, but start with R1 and go from there. R17, I think, is too loose. For some of you, for Commissioner Messina, I served as a planning commissioner for the term of 11 years. I thoroughly read packets, asked questions, and listened to all comments before casting my vote. In those 11 years, I regret only one vote. Which one?
I don't remember that far back.
You can guess. Belle Reve, Riverstone. It just, it haunts me to this day. Before you cast your vote, please consider the following. What if the proposed zoning is too broad and too intense for the site? Importantly, what if it restricts comprehensive planning? And even more importantly, what if it does not protect the pristine shoreline? Finally, really important, what if the city lacks the ordinances and the will to enforce your mandate? To that end, should you choose to approve this own change and recommended annexation, I urge that you include condition, that you condition Resolution 14019 to preserve a public shoreline and to utilize comprehensive planning for each proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Susie.
You're welcome.
Next person I have, Sherri Robinson, and she does want to testify, and she checked State your name and address, please.
Sherri Robinson, 4465 Green Chain Loop, and I am in favor of the annexation, and I would like to give my minutes to Chet Gady.
Okay, no problem. Next person I have is Chet, who does want to speak, and he is in favor, and you have a few minutes added to your-
I am in favor. And in fact, I'm really, really, really excited to be here tonight to talk about this property. And I'm at 4465 Green Chain Loop in City of Coeur d'Alene. And I'm really, really, really in favor of how this whole process is moving through.
I want to excuse you, and you were the gentleman that wrote the letter that was in our package.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And so you know my big three in that letter, and so I'd like to talk about some other things here.
And you might want to touch on your letter too, if you care to.
I will.
Sure.
So I'm really excited about the property because the property is a once-in-a-forever chance for the city, and the city, if they do it right, is glorified forever. It's great. But I'm also excited because unfortunately for my wife and my friends, I am a process wonk, and I am excited about processes. And this is a process. And why I'm excited about this process is it's, as Hillary started out today, this is very different, because who is the applicant? The applicant is the city. And that, and Mike also mentioned that, that changes this whole process. And that gives you all, I hope, and a lot of excitement, because it gives you new responsibilities and new opportunities as a planning commission. Let me just give you one quick example of what I mean. So if I were sitting out here and you zoned it C-17, and I said, that's terrible, and I went and said, what do I do? I appeal, and the appeal goes to city council, right? Well, city council in a meeting in May, in a joint meeting with May, with Ignite, with the planning department, all came up with, gosh, the best thing for us would be C-17. But wait a minute, I'm going to appeal to the people who decided on what the zoning is going to be? That's sort of strange. So I'm looking for you to come up with lots of, lots of ideas for your conditions that should be put on this property, because it is sort of out of kilter. You are serving at the pleasure of council, they appointed you, but they appointed you because they are required to by law. Okay? So you are the ones that I can see jumping in and saying, hey, council, remember when you said this, or when you said that? And so I would like to see lots of conditions. And from your conversation tonight, I think it is really great that you are involved. Pete, you were very suspicious about the C-17 zoning going to somebody else that might build the juvenile detention center along the river, because that's in C-17. Now Parks and Recs might call that skateboard park, but, you know, it's something we need to be concerned with. So where do I start, besides my excitement? You've been given a couple of options here, looking at this property, and they say, ah, you know, we want to zone at C-17, but we're going to require everyone to have a PUD. And that means it'll come back before you, so you can decide whether you like it or And that will protect that riverfront area that we talked about in the letter. And just for clarification, I can please stay at the microphone? No!
You're not going to get on tape then?
Do you stay at the microphone?
Chet, you can use the mouse and point on the screen.
I can use the mouse?
You can use the mouse and point on the screen.
When we were talking the railroad right away, we were not talking this extension up here. Basically, we, when we presented this, because I was also part of the ad hoc committee that presented to council, we were talking the railroad right away that went through there. Okay? So we don't want this land to remain public. That's for clarification. So we have a PUD that we're going to require to protect the shoreline. Why? Why not just keep it in the public? A PUD means, gosh, the next, we're going to require a PUD for the next owner. The next owner is going to be LCDC. And I use LCDC instead of Ignite because that is Lake City Development Corporation. They are developing this. When the city started working on developing Memorial Field, they didn't sell it to LCDC or Ignite so they could develop it. They had Ignite develop it for the city. So keep that property, because that is your best thing for shoreline protection. You talk about shoreline protection ordinance, that is a really great thing. And you talk in the same time about a PUD. Well, the PUD erases the shoreline protective ordinance, or can erase it. That's what happened to your Riverstone Belle Reve property. What else do we have? We talk about who's buying it, who's developing it. In the same city council meeting where the zoning was discussed, council members discussed a goal of $100 million of taxable property. Now, they didn't say how long that would take, but by having taxable property on there, they're going to get their money back, Ignite's going to get their money back, and that's a pretty good thing. And I agree with that. I think that's a great goal. But the same conversation, they said, well, you know, that might mean houses on the riverfront. And then I start disagreeing with the method to reach the goal. So again, if that property remains public, then we won't have houses on the riverfront. We talk about bars and pubs and nice places to gather along the river. Doesn't mean you have to splash in the river. You could set that back to the railroad and to the railroad right away and still have waterfront views. You're still on the river, but you might have a bike path. Interesting, we talked a lot, or Hillary talked a lot about Resolution 08005. Are you all familiar with that resolution?
No.
Oh, you are, because that's the comp plan.
Okay.
Okay? And I just want to point out that that's a resolution. The Parks Master Plan is a resolution. Ignite CDA's implementation plan is a resolution. The Resolution 1449 that I'm concerned with, and I talk about in my letter, is a resolution.
Excuse me, can you reset that timer, please, to five minutes and let the gentleman just speak? Thank you.
And then there is the latest planning resolution that Hillary touched on shortly, and that's 17035, which is the Trail Master Plan. Okay? Trail Master Plan says, gosh, we want a multi-use trail right along the river there. How do we do that? Keep it. Once the city buys that, keep it. Don't let it go. So all of the goals that we're talking about here, the city keeping that property is imperative. I don't, and it's imperative in that 08 resolution, the master plan, it's imperative in the Parks Master Plan. Everything says public access. So don't sell the property. So make a condition that the property, if it's purchased, the property from the railroad to the river remains public, and it makes a lot of your goals. I don't remember any of those planning documents saying, a goal of the community is to have houses along the river. I don't ever see that anywhere. So if the city gets a hold of this property, please, 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 keep it. You mentioned the Riverstone and the Belle Reve, and we need to keep protection. Same thing, if you could have kept that ownership of that property, it would have worked. So in closing, I'm extremely happy about this project. I'm extremely happy the direction it's going. I probably agree with Susie, that's two times in one night that someone's agreed with her, so she's ecstatic about the R1 and starting strict and then loosening up. Because if you're going to have a PUD, the PUD is going to overwrite all the zoning anyway. So why not start with strict zoning, require a PUD? The owners come in, put their PUD in, and you grant their PUD. The only place that might get you in a little trouble is trying to value the property. Ignite might have some problems with that. So if in fact you are going to do C-17 zoning, please put some flags on that saying, C-17 doesn't do anything to protect the riverfront. C-17 doesn't do anything, and it's the weakest zoning to require comprehensive planning. And please, if you do C-17, yes, 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 we need PUDs, because otherwise, by right, we're going to have some strange things showing up there. So I want to thank you all for being excited and asking great questions about this, because this isn't really unusual place to be. So thank you for being here.
Thank you. Hold on for one minute, I've got a question for legal. Chet mentioned conditions, different than recommendations. Can we, this commission, on this request, put a condition, or is it just recommendations? I'd like to get a little clarification on that.
It's just recommendations, you know, you cannot condition that zoning, it is what it is.
Yeah, so I don't think we can do a condition.
My condition is on the annexation agreement, not on the zoning.
Yeah, and that's something that's going to be talked about at city council. We're just talking about the C-17 here right now.
Oh, sir, we're not, because we are, Hillary outlined 10 conditions that they are asking you to pass on to city council.
No, not conditions, recommendations.
They're recommendations for conditions on the annexation agreement.
Go ahead, let's-
So you can recommend conditions, you just can't lock in conditions.
All right. I just wanted to get that clarified.
And so I'm asking you to recommend some different ones, and think about those, because some of them, like the PUD and the shoreline protection ordinance are maybe opposed, and you got to think big.
Big, I appreciate it.
We just had a festival in town about that, it's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good points, appreciate it. Next gentleman I have is Roger Smith. He does wish to speak, and he is in favor. Welcome. Name and address, please, Roger.
Roger Smith, 810 Bancroft, Coeur d'Alene. This is a huge event tonight. I don't know when this city of Coeur d'Alene has had this opportunity before them, and it's kind of starting with you guys in terms of the formal process. But huge, huge opportunity with a blank slate property on the river, 40-plus acres, in-city ownership, full city control of what happens with this wonderful blank slate property down there. A wonderful riverfront that most cities would love to have this to work with. This is so unusual for a city to have this, you guys. So I'm sure you appreciate that, but somebody described it as a once- So I'm sure you appreciate that, but somebody described it as a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and I remember I was corrected once by somebody that said, "No, no, it's a once-and-for-ever opportunity." And somebody else used that expression tonight. A once-and-for-ever opportunity to do something that is a real legacy for the city of Coeur Fortunately, we have a city resolution that lays out some very explicit controls for riverfront preservation and public use of riverfront. That Resolution 14-049 that the city council passed was very clear about what was to be the future of riverfront property in Coeur d'Alene. And we also have a comprehensive plan that is pretty clear also, like we saw earlier, that spells out intentions of open space, intentions of public access, intentions of protecting the riverfront. A condition that I hope can be in the, and first of all, I'm for the annexation, this wonderful opportunity for the city to own this. I'm definitely for the annexation. I'm opposed to the C-17 as a zoning for that annexation. I would prefer to see the R1. Somebody described it as starting strict and loosening up as you go, and I think that's a very clear way to think of it, starting with an R1 recommendation for the zoning, and maybe through PUDs or plans later, relaxing that. Honoring resolution that the city council passed would also involve protecting the shoreline, as has been discussed, and we're talking specifically about the entire property from the railroad right away down to the water, along the entire waterfront for that parcel. And I might add, protecting it forever. This would be, in perpetuity, a legacy protection of waterfront, public use, and hopefully open space preservation along that waterfront. I was just in Bend recently, and I saw what they did along their Deschutes River in Bend. Wonderful concept. They still have waterfront property, but it's maybe 100 feet back or more. They have restaurants, they have other uses mixed in, but a wonderful public use trail system and natural landscaping between that development and the river. And everybody enjoys it, everybody gets value out of it. And when we talk of value, we have to emphasize public value. I'm sure that Ignite is probably wanting to think like a developer. In fact, they've stated that, that that's the way they think sometime, and they're wanting to put dollar and cents value on this whole option. But they have to be able to assign public value. And that's hard to put a dollar figure on, but I would invite you to sometime look at what Bend has done, and the public value there is tremendous. So again, in favor of the annexation, please do the right thing. Start strict with an R1 zoning, relax it later. And I do think tonight you should be thinking of some fairly formal conditions, not just recommended conditions, that the annexation could include. And we've seen some good ones that Hillary presented. We've mentioned some other ones, the preservation of that entire parcel, and the requirement for a comprehensive master planning down there. So I hope you'll keep those on your list. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person I have is Patricia Byer, and she does not wish to testify. She's in favor, but not for the zone as C-17. James Byer, the same, does not wish to testify, but is not in favor, is in favor, but not for the zone of C-17. And that is the last person I have on my list for public hearing. Is there anyone else that, at this moment, would like to get up and say anything before I close the public hearing? Hillary, do you wish to say anything else, or are we pretty good?
No, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to close public hearing, and I'm going to, this commission, kind of take it over and see what discussion we might have, questions or something like that. Go ahead, John.
Did you say that, thank you, did you say that the Parks Director is here?
Yes.
Bill, would you mind? Give you a little FaceTime tonight, Bill.
Do I have to open up public hearing again, Mike, or we're good?
I'm staff.
I know you're staff.
Yeah, he's staff. I think you can ask questions of staff.
Okay. Thank you.
So Hillary mentioned a few things, you know, she talked about that might be sort of visionary from a Parks perspective, you know? We talked about the trails and so many acres of parkland and this and that. And I thought I heard boats and boat launch, or did I hear boat launch somewhere?
There were the possibility of discussion about some docks, but not so much a launch.
I just wanted to be clear.
So one of the things that we're really looking forward to on this property, the opportunity, we missed an opportunity for an accessible kayak launch a while back. And I'm still having given up that bone, and I'm going to see that we get that for our community, and this is maybe one of those good locations for that. So that's what she was referencing.
My personal opinion is, I was just hoping I wasn't going to hear you say, you know, some big boat, Third Street boat launchy kind of a deal coming that way.
Not on my watch, but yeah.
And so that's great, and I totally agree with the kayak. You know, some opportunity for light boats, maybe even something as big as a canoe to get dragged into the water.
It would be, everything that would be passive use, no motorized stuff. And, you know, again, we're in the early stages of this. Mill River has a little dock that you can pull up to. There may be, because there's a lot of shoreline, there may be an opportunity for that sort of separation between the public use area and the opportunity for someone to have a public dock that they could pick people up from. Again, we separate those far enough, so where the activity of our citizens are at, this wouldn't be near them.
Thank you. One other tough question sent you there, and I think one of the things we're going to debate a little bit here is almost kind of the definition of open space. My personal opinion is, I wouldn't want to see any houses along the water at all, you know? But whether, you know, we say would restrict the water so tightly that you couldn't have a little harbor house opportunity, or maybe even something a little bigger if it was done right. What's your experience with, you know, the harbor house has gotten a little beat up in the last day or two because of some garbage, or whatever, but, you know, what Mike Gridley called, what did he call it, three, third person, third something?
Third places, sir.
Third places, thank you. What's your experience with third places opportunities? You know, if the harbor house is a third place's light, if you will, are you comfortable with that in your parkland? Or maybe even a third?
Yeah, the harbor house, let's use as an example, and you're right, it's got some bad pressure recently, only because we are very successful, and we got very busy, and we couldn't keep up. And it was a big day, it was a big weekend. We had almost 30 people on staff that weekend, had 13 of those that were working their days off. So everybody was stretched pretty thin, and so it was just one bad situation that hit the press. So to answer your question, though, it's been working very well.
And, yeah, I didn't mean to.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I love to talk about it.
I think that's a little blip. The essence of the question was, do you see that that's a good fit? And do you see that that is something that the public really relishes?
Yes, it's been very successful.
And if that's, if the harbor house is third-place light?
Right.
Would you be receptive to, you know, a third-place period, which might be a little bit bigger than that? You know, not a shopping center on the water, but maybe a brew pub.
Well, and the thing about the C-17, it really gives us that sort of flexibility, as Mike said earlier. And so, you know, in my own mind, I'm even thinking about spots, because we have commercial docks at Independence Point. We might have a commercial vendor there. I'm not saying we would, but it would be nice to be able to provide kayaks and paddleboards.
A little rental opportunity thing.
Right. So we get some revenue. It's for folks that may, that can't afford a kayak or a paddleboard that are traveling through. It gives them a chance to get there, so it gives them another spot in town. Sometimes the Independence Point's kind of busy, so we've stretched that out a little bit and provide that opportunity. I think it's a great idea.
Bicycle rental.
Yep, absolutely.
And do you make these recommendations to city council? Is that how this process would work? Because I see this as an extension of, kind of like you just said, an opportunity for the general public to not have to get into Coeur d'Alene, not taking away from Coeur d'Alene, but to get on the lake and walk the streets, as Hillary and I talked a little bit about, you know, go across the street. Monroe used to be at the shops, and you'd see people going across Sherman with these 12-foot boards and whatnot. So perhaps envisioning, and hopefully, I guess you'd make recommendations, to have a little, for lack of better words, retail center. That's generally best for the public, so you have some parking close by.
Correct.
You can go in and rent a paddleboard or a thing, hopefully not a jumping jack type of situation, but something within the, again, the control of the city as a vision, that it is open space, but also revenue for the city and the public we have.
And we get a little revenue on the other side of that, too, Commissioner, is that it really is good for the community as well. I mean, we'll get some dollars out of it, and that's always a good thing, but providing that opportunity for folks that are visiting, just regular folks, is really good.
Right. And perhaps, I don't know if the waterways would, you know, like to have at the city beach rope off a certain area and stuff, and I don't know how that would work, again, with the city, but I just see this an extension of city beach actually getting down on the riverside down here a little bit, you know, in that area.
The thing, too, about this site, it's just so much opportunity. City beach is awfully crowded, and right now, you know, we are maxed out what we think we can do with commercial activity in that area.
Yeah.
And so this helps thin that out a little bit and then create some other spots. And again, the flexibility of the C-17 allows us to do that. And whether it's a little, if it's one of the shops up there, or it's whether we put something out that's closer to the edge of the water, that they put stuff in, or we put a dock out like we have currently, where we have several vendors, and one of those guys, and one of those vendors, those companies, has paddleboards and kayaks and the type of bicycle boats you can get in. And they've just put that stuff on the dock, and they lock it up. And so maybe they just have a little booth there. But again, we're just, you know, just talking here. We're not, we're just kind of brainstorming about what all the possibilities are. Until we get into the planning stage, we don't know what all those things people can come up with.
All right. Great.
And I'm real open to lots of good ideas. I've got some. I heard Chet's got some good ideas. I really like, I look at this more as an investment in two ways. I mean, it's a financial investment, but it's really an investment for our community. And so Chet's position is a little different than mine. I think that he's got some great ideas, but I think my position's a little more balanced in that, you know, it'd be nice to have that entire waterfront. I understand that. But it'd also be nice to get the revenue off some of that. And we're not, we're still abiding what we've said in all these ordinance and resolutions. We're providing something for the public. A big stretch of this, from here to here, this right here, in my mind, because of the way the topography sets up right now, that's the beach. It's where they used to pull the logs out at. And so all this is high ground. It's not buildable. So, and access to this is really kind of tight. It's not really accessible to water, but certainly could be public open space with viewing corridors, and maybe small shelters or something in there, where the bike path weaves through in this, and it opens up into a much larger park area. And so there's all kinds of things that we can do with this, because it's a clean slate. It's wide open.
I totally agree with you. I see this as a great area of development for the general public, as well as some commercial setback, there's big chunks that aren't right on the water. And as it was mentioned here a number of times, this is a forever opportunity.
Yes, it is.
And I think the city, this is my personal opinion, is doing its due diligence to make sure that it is within the city, and it is for the public.
Yes.
With, of course, you've got to take in financial requests on this type of property, because it costs a lot of money, and you want to develop it, but you want to get some revenue out of it at all.
Well, and everybody loves their parks, but we need to remember that it takes money to run them, and it takes money to build them. And so it's nice to talk about R1, but I'm not certain, you know, the tax base is something that's really important to our community, too, and so we need to look at that as well. So when I said balance, I just don't want to be greedy about parks. I'm a park guy, don't get me wrong, but there's a lot of land here for park, and there's a lot of land here for development.
I totally agree with you. Any other questions?
We'd like to speak. One of the girls would like to speak. Any day now. Great cities in America and Canada have water. Toronto, Vancouver, Seattle, Portland, this is an opportunity of a lifetime.
Oh, you're absolutely right.
And I cannot think of any city that I like to look at the front door as they hog the view. And there are a few places in Vancouver where I go, "Darn, I wish we had that view." And so I don't think this is to be debated. I think we need 190 feet. I think we need to take all that water, we need to take all that right away, and just make it park. Make it a place people can walk, accessible. You can walk all the way down to the waterfront. And we already have set this up. We have it at Sanders, we have it at Tubbs, we have it at Downtown, we have it all around the Fort Grounds. The only place we don't have it is Bell Reve, and we're all going, "What did we do?" So I don't know that this is up for debate. I think we have to make it accessible. And yes, it'd be nice to tuck in, or maybe you even carve in a little bay where you could tuck in some non-motorized boats and a dog park. You know, you can carve in a little spot. This is also the pinch point on the river. I swim my dog down there on a long leash, because she'd be down, you know, 50 yards before I could bat an eye. So there's a high push down the river all the time down there. So it's not a great dog park zone, unless you have a really strong dog swimming. But, and also even kids. I mean, two drownings up in Span Point this weekend, and kids just didn't know how to swim, and didn't have their life jackets on, and it was too strong a pull, and this could have harm. So, you know, a little bit of beach, well-protected, and breakwater to it is a great idea. But this is an opportunity that connects this entire city on all sides, and yes, you'll still have plenty of C-17, you'll still have plenty of opportunity. And I do think we need to have a say in a PUD form, because I don't think you could just stand back and say, "Yeah, you can do whatever you please." And then we have height issues, and we have obstructive views. This is an amazing view across the river, which I hope, this is all marshy up here, so I'm hoping they won't build right up to the edge of it, but you never know. It's Cootney County.
As Mike said earlier, the reason for, you know, and many people have said it, it's a great opportunity, is we are controlling it, where previously, we weren't certain what the developer may do.
And I think the growth here, as you say, you've overgrown city beach. The growth is demanding that we have this accessibility, that not everyone's on Tubbs Hill tearing it up. That we can spread people out and a little easier to get to and from here. You could make handicap-accessible points of entry, which, you know, this is all flat coming right off the end of Bell Reve. So I really think that this is an opportunity that shouldn't be missed, and even if we took 10% of this land, we're only talking, I think, 14 acres or 19 acres, something like that, that we could make this our park, and the offset from the other build would benefit.
Yes.
Maybe your turn.
So this is for staff, and being new to the PUD process, it seems like everyone does want to achieve the same thing, and this is an opportunity that we don't want to squander in their previous resolutions, but there's questions and concerns about the teeth of those or the follow-through. In previous situations, it's been a private developer versus a city or economic development group. But it seems, based on the 10 recommendations, that there are some tools, even with the C-17 zone, that would enable us to achieve some of the conditions that have been stated in previous resolutions. So maybe the staff can talk a little bit how we, as a planning commission, could ensure that a PUD, so there's a mention of a full PUD and not a limited design PUD. I certainly appreciate one of the comments that Hillary made about flexibility, offering really the most creativity to start with, and I think that has value, too, as well as starting strict. But is a PUD processed, it comes back only to Planning Commission, or back to just city council?
So the planning, or yeah, the planning development only comes back to the Planning Commission. The difference between that limited design PUD and the full-blown is that the limited design is, you get very little detail, so you don't have the same master planning, the architectural, all of that. And so that was staff's recommendation, if a PUD is desired to help really kind of control the destiny of how the site is developed, that that's the tool that offers us a lot more of those teeth you were talking about.
Which could include reserving the shoreline ordinance and park the waterfront and right away?
Yes, and that's something, if the commission would like to modify any of those recommended conditions for council to consider, we could add references to resolutions.
Is the PUD constrained in any fashion by the zoning?
So there's the underlying zoning, and then the PUD is an overlay on top of that, so they work in conjunction with each other. So if you had R1 zoning and a PUD, you'd still be restricted. You'd have to change.
You could still do your PUD if it was R1 or C-17. You could still do your PUD if it was R1 or C-17.
You would, so to allow different uses, ultimately it'd have to be rezoned, and I think that's what some of the public commentary was. They were saying to do the lower zoning initially, and then once it's designed, then it would have to be zoned to different zoning districts and then do a PUD.
So the PUD could drive the zoning, the zoning would not necessarily drive the PUD?
They would ultimately, makes sense to do it in conjunction together.
I understand. You mentioned the parks, you know, Harbor House, City Park. Are your parks zoned C-17?
I don't know what the zoning, I don't think so.
No, they can be in any zoning district. They can be residential or commercial.
So why would you want to have C-17 on your parks here?
As I said about the tax base, the flexibility to create revenue.
Or you just want it for taxes?
Correct. I mean, it just, it gives the ability to just be more creative, that's all. And so if you limit it, I
Well, I just, I
No, I just see it a little differently, that's all. And it's just my opinion, but I like to see the revenue come off this piece of property. And there's a lot of land there for parkland. I had heard some folks say, make the whole thing parkland. And that's great, but it's like, you know, it's more for me to take care of and it's a lot of dollars that we don't get any return financially, and we get some really good quality of life, and that's always extremely important. But like I said, I'm a little bit more balanced in my view. I think there's plenty of room here for a 10 or 12, 14-acre park. You know, to give you a perspective of what that is, City Park's about 12, not including the beach. So it gives you a kind of a visual what that might look like.
And if you come back with a PUD, regardless if it's, you know, one quarter of that piece of property, when you come back with a PUD, you're aware of, we can put restrictions on what that PUD is going to consist of. You know, we don't have to have 6,000 square foot homes. You can, you know, here, again, it's the opportunity that the city has with the conditions we can make or recommendations we can make, the recommendations that city council has that they can do to say, okay, if it's a PUD, let's see what this PUD is going to be. And we here, this commission, when it comes to us, we go, no, that's not what we want. But I think if we put all this upfront before the deal is done, and then when the deal is done, whoever wants to come in and do, let's say, a residential or a commercial, there are some definite guidelines to say, this is what we want this piece of property to look like because it has to dovetail with the park, with whatever's going to be down there. So that's what this opportunity really is.
Chairman, Mr. Seenick, I make one comment. One of the reasons the city, I think, is looking to buy this is because other private parties have looked at this property and evaluated the risk and said, there's too much risk here. The city owns a railroad, there's all this, we don't know what's going to happen. Will the city let us develop here or not? There's too much risk involved. And so one of the things we're trying to achieve is minimizing some of that risk. Now, when, so by my opinion, when you narrow down, so if you do an R1 or something like that, that immediately puts more risk back on a future user, future developer, because they don't know whether you will ever grant a higher zone. On the other hand, if you have a C-17, people will come in, it gives them the flexibility to come in with their ideas. We have the power to limit through the PUD, through other approval process, how that is ultimately developed. But again, it just, from the private perspective, they look at this property and go, gosh, we need to get through these wickets to increase that zoning versus, all right, it's already C-17, it's already in a URA, and it's something that we're willing to put some effort in to plan and work with the community to develop. So that's just kind of one perspective that I think looks at how the private world looks at these things.
Following up on that, Mike, if the ultimate property owner develops PUD, is that going to be Ignite CDA or is that somebody else? Is it envisioned that Ignite CDA is going to be the PUD proposer? Or is it envisioned that Ignite CDA will sell that to somebody else and that other party will?
Well, I think, I think as Hillary alluded to, this is going to be a community visioning project. Ignite will hold it. They're not going to just cut it loose to whoever comes in with some money. They would be, they could be a co-applicant, they could be the applicant. They, I don't think intend to be the developer. I don't think they intend to get into that business. I think they intend to help, again, create a canvas or a, set the table to work with people who will come in and do things that the community wants.
So the concern is if, when working with those, if the underlying zoning is R1, that may be too constraining from their view and too uncertain for them in developing, well, in their development plans.
It just limits, again, people, if you're looking to put your money into a project, you want to have as much entitlement already established as you can because otherwise, if you put your money in and then it gets upzoned more than from R1, you got nothing.
Can you do a PUD in anticipation of buying the property? That you would do the, you would buy the property upon approval of the city of your PUD?
Well, certainly you can make recommendations. Are you saying planning commission or you?
No, I'm saying that the developer may have risk if it's zoned something below That's what you said, right?
Right. They know that they will have to go through some more hearing, public hearings to get it changed if it's not a higher zone.
Right. And that adds, well, it seems to me that speaks right to the issue that's come up here, be it R1 or C-17.
Well, what a PUD would do is bring it back to us, basically. And then we have the final say of whether or not that PUD would be allowed or wouldn't. What this does for the city, I think it makes it a little bit more economical to do some parks because there's no revenues, quote, in parks. There's no tax bases in parks, but there's cost to maintain those parks. And if we're talking about open space, public launch things and stuff like that, there's a dollar figure to maintain all that. It's just not free. It might look like it's free, but it's not. And so what this does by letting LCDC, that's what I always call them, come in and participate in this and some financial amount of this, and then perhaps sell off some of the property to make the parks doable for the public to come in. So that's, yeah, the city can maintain it, but we're not buying this whole piece of property. So it's a double-edged sword here where it's kind of one of the things where, yes, it would be great to have it all public, but it's not feasible. We need to get some of it away, sell it, get your money back, put that park in there so you have as much as you possibly can on that waterfront that's open to the public with trails, with whatever it might be. So I can go down there, my kids can go down there, the general public can go down there and not have to walk through a path between houses and just have a boardwalk to sit on. I want to be able to go down here some year and sit like I can at Tubbs Hill or the city beach and rent a kayak. That's what I see what this is. And to do that, I think we have to do everything that everyone here wants, but we all have to compromise a little bit. And that's kind of how we're moving forward.
My only issue is the R17. We talked about Belle River, you know, that could have been different. I think it sets a completely different tenor if we say R1 or R3 and is a basis. Now, if you do a PUD, you build from that. And you say, okay, I can't live with R3, I've got to live with this zoning over here and so forth. So you build up from there as opposed to already have it R17.
On that statement, if we have nothing for our
Chairman, I want to say to you, though,
Go right ahead.
what you were just saying is spot on. Everything that you said is absolutely accurate in my mind because you're absolutely right. We need to be able to get some of that revenue back to build the park. And that's why I was talking about C-17. That's what I was saying earlier about a balance and a need for a financial return in some of this and just, not just a park return. I'm excited about the opportunity for the park. But again, what you stated is exactly how I was spinning it here in my own mind about how the revenue generated off this would actually help build the park.
And I see the value of C-17 on this piece of property, but it has to be done, as I mentioned, correctly.
Correct.
You know, and I know we've had it before, but before we go ahead, if there's any other questions, you can have a seat. Because now we'll have our discussion, which we've been having discussed. And so, John, go right ahead.
I'd like to jump in on kind of making an argument here is what I'm going to try to do. And I don't really think that the folks in this room, this isn't like a public hearing where, you know, this is a yes, no kind of a deal. I think we're all sort of wanting to see the same thing here. It's not that kind of a hearing. You know, it's a matter of what zoning is appropriate. And I'm going to make an argument that C-17 is the way to go, and here's why. First, we put a lot of effort in it around this dais already in making the property that you see on the slide up there, the BNSF property is C-17. We've gone through a lot of analysis to come up with that decision. Number two, it's surrounded by C-17, you know, so that's another good, strong argument. I'm less concerned about the zoning than maybe beefing up those statements in the annexation report or annexation agreement that makes a strong statement that we highly, highly, strongly recommend, council, that you require a PUD approach. And I'll say this, that, you know, everybody, you know, Spokane River, Friends of Spokane River Corridor, Letter and so forth, really wants to see a comprehensive planning process. You know, the city wants to do a comprehensive planning process. That's in the slide with LCDC. Let's start with a clean slate. If you're going to do visioning and you've already locked in, you know, a vision of R1, yeah, that's pretty locked down. I don't think that's the way to go. I think start the visioning with a clean slate of paper. And with a PUD, we're going to see it, the community's going to have hands on it from beginning to end. So I'm very comfortable with C-17, but I would, I would want a statement added to that annexation agreement that says, no heavy boat launch. You know, a kayak-y thing is cool. And I'd like to see a statement that says, if it doesn't already, that there'll be a trail along the river. That's not to say that you couldn't have a third place opportunity as we have discussed tonight, you know, some of those along, weaved in there with a trail along the river. But here's the last one. I'd like to say, you know, you know, no housing, no residential along the river. But I think C-17 is the way to go. And I think if we did that, if we trust the, you know, I'm a process wonk, too. And I think, you know, we've been through enough of these PUDs to know that it gives us a lot of control when they're approved, they're locked in, they have to come back here for, you know, any adjustments if they deviate from what gets approved here. And you get to see all the details and you get to approve all the details. I think the PUD is key, not the zoning. But I personally don't want to see houses. I don't want to see residential immediately along the river.
Thank you, John.
John, would you, you mentioned earlier that some condition about no building within X number of feet of the river? Would you feel comfortable adding something like that in here?
No, because I want to, I want to go down there and sit at a Harbor House. I want to go down, maybe there's a little cabana thing that rents me a bike and
A kiosk type of situation.
Yes, or maybe even something a little bigger, you know? If it's done well and we're going to see the details in a PUD, I'm not so, I just don't want to see people buying it and boxing me out. When we see developers buy, you know, a chunk of the lake, not to mention any names, but, you know, prominent points across the lake somewhere between Eddyville and Powderhorn, there's a prominent tip. I can't go there anymore.
You can't.
I can't go there anymore.
Can't go to Eddie's at all.
Yeah, like, you know, so once, if this was residential along there, I can't go there anymore. But, you know, not to say a little structure couldn't exist that is a commercial opportunity that I could go in and have a sandwich and a beer, I might be okay with it.
So could you articulate something along those lines? No houses but little third places, something like that?
That's what we're talking about.
Well, can you articulate, can we put something like that in there? Because I support that.
Pete, you can put that in there if you'd like, if you have a figure in your mind. That's something that we are, we can do here that if you feel you don't want residential and, you know, you want it 200 feet back from the shoreline, that's what we're going to discuss here. And hopefully each one of us will have a little input on that because as you can tell, more and more of it is coming out. So encourage us all to have a discussion and not just say, okay, yes, or could you do this? So if you have a recommendation, just put it out there and let's see where it goes.
I have a process, Mr. Chairman, and a process of conversation.
No, and that's exactly what I'm saying.
That's where I want to get.
Yeah, we have, I mean, to say, and I'm, you know, I'm not against no residential at all along the riverfront, but I think we'd have to put some teeth into it, and maybe we do say a certain foot, footage back. But I couldn't tell on that map how much to say. It's, you know, it's hard to say, is it 100 feet? Is it 200 feet? I don't know what that magic number is. But I totally agree with Mr. Ingalls about C-17 being the right zoning for this process.
I think what we have to do is trust the process. I think what we're hearing painted from staff is a process they're painting of community visioning, master planning. That's very, you know, you know, some public, a ton of public involvement in that process. No?
Yes, and to clarify, so we, and actually, thank you to Steve Gill for being here from Department of Environmental Quality. They also have an opportunity for us as part of the community visioning to do this vision-to-action process. And so as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, we would do that after the city and Ignite decided to close on the property. And it would be, the community visioning would be focused primarily on, I think, the public open space, recreation, waterfront access and all of that. And then it hasn't been determined yet how the PUD, who would take the lead on that and the master planning process. I mean, it could be done by Ignite with city, it could be involving the public, it could be a design competition, as Susie had said, it could be, you know, we have developers doing master plans and bidding on developing the process. We don't know. But absolutely, there's a lot of the master planning and community visioning is critical to this project.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think from the presentations from staff, and, you know, for me, this is actually why I wanted to be on the planning commission. I didn't think it would happen three months in, but because of the opportunity, I think, to shape the future and the vision and some really, you know, gems of pieces of property in this community, I think the C-17 with some conditions, including the PUD, where we have an opportunity to guide and manage the process as well as manage the risk. And, you know, one of the comments that Mike made about, is I was thinking of what risks are we not seeing by doing something else? You know, sitting on, having the city sit on a P, on R1 or a more restrictive property, I think, could ultimately be challenging, just in terms of finances and risk and not being able to do something public with it because of the lack of tax base or to do something more creative with it. So I think the, to what John said about trusting process, and we have an opportunity to shape that process and manage the risk and shape the future and achieve multiple goals under the comprehensive, the comp plan, I think often those are, can be in conflict. Economic development and public health and community in nature, all of those things, there's often trade-offs. And I see this as an opportunity to achieve multiple goals in, with one, with the zoning and a public process and with the city kind of shaping that and us having an opportunity to put some conditions or recommend, recommended conditions.
Thank you. Lynn?
I am also in support of the C-17. I've worked on approximately half the houses down in Belle Reve. And the cost of the brownfield has been far higher to these homeowners than they ever guessed. guessed. What they found underneath the ground is frightening and the costs that they've put in that ground. So this kind of a site with the topography that it has, that it's inherent to it, and the logs that are hidden under the mounds, which will be there, and God knows what else because if it's anything like the mill site down the river, it's a junk heap. And so commercial construction has deeper pockets. R1 are the smaller builders, lower budgets, and they will be shocked at the cost to just get it out of the ground. I think that C-17 allows us to build roads in the right places. It allows us to deal with the height, the variation of heights. And we are right next to Seltice where a number of people can come to a doctor's office, to a dentist's office, to get in and out the public and get that, that on and off the road easily. To just isolate it to R1 doesn't make sense to me. You're now creating a forest, you know, some small gated community only on a 40 acre site. So I'm in support of the C-17 because I know the costs involved in road, sewer, all that that goes into such a massive development and that that will bring with it parks, access, green space, parking, all the things that we need to support that amazing river and give it back to the city. And I hope that the city can see its way to holding on to that riverfront and then 190 feet back, which is the shoreline plus the railway area, and that we can keep that in perpetuity for the community and then have its fingers back to this C-17. And yes, there might be something coming to that water, but on a very limited basis. It could be just across the road. It could be a great little restaurant sitting out there, you know, just slightly back, but you still have that great view. Nobody's put their house in front of your view. So I think that, I think the intent is right and definitely PUD. I would like us to have more say as this goes forward, so.
Okay. Well, I thank you for that input as well. I think you can pretty much tell where this might be going, but I wanted to thank again because I'm going to call for hopefully a motion from one of our commissioners here and hopefully get a second on that and, and see where, what happens. But I want to thank everyone that spoke. Again, a lot of this stuff is compromise, can't get everything all the time, but your input is very, very important. Again, this goes to city council. Again, you have your opportunity to go and talk, make your point. So at this point, I'm going to call for a motion and if someone please would make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, Chairman, and I'm going to take a shot at this. Like you say, I think I, I think we know where we might land on the C-17 issue. I'm going to walk through this and also take a shot at just a little bit of a modification of what would be the findings, adopting the staff inclusions for annexation agreement, a couple of those. So, so I would make a recommendation that we take forth this matter that came before us tonight, A-217, a request for zoning prior to annexation County Industrial to C-17 City with the applicant, the city of Court Lane and the property as described in the finding worksheet at 37, 37-4 West Seltis Way. I would propose that we adopt findings B-1 through B-7 as stated in the worksheet. And I would say, I'd like to address B-8, that this would be in conformance with the comprehensive plan, basically adopting the arguments in the staff report that, you know, it touches on the four goals. And I would emphasize four, you know, four, and particularly under goal one, the waterfront development, 1.03, 1.04, 1.05 and 1.09, those kind of float to the surface as does 1.13 open space, 1.16 connectivity. And I think this syncs well with the comp plan with respect to goal number two, with respect to business environment. And on the subject of the finding and making the argument that it is in conformance with the comp plan, and I think we've heard the testimony that most of the folks think this is, you know, a great opportunity to do what the comp plan says with respect to those things that are stated in the comp plan with respect to public access provided on the river, open space, connections. But the comp plan also says various commercial, residential and mixed uses. So I think, you know, the comp plan talks about that area is changing and it emphasizes a mixed use neighborhood with housing, commercial, retail and service. So I think it fits well with the comp plan. B-9, the finding that the facilities and utilities are available, you know, we have the staff report before us that says that all of those things, water, sewer and such are achievable and available. B-10, that the physical characteristics of the site make it suitable for development while there are a number, number of big rubble piles and unsightly things and so forth. We had testimony and hear that, you know, we're not expecting any kind of grievous, you know, green slime type environmental issues and, you know, toxic waste dump or something like that. So I think we're good there. B-11, the proposal would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood with regard to traffic. City engineer says that traffic should be accommodatable with the new improved Seltis Way and the neighborhood character arguably, this C-17 is surrounded by existing C-17, so it should be in sync there. So propose that the commanding, planning commission pursuant to those arguments would approve this request. I would recommend that we take those 10 items that you have before you. I would like to see item number two strengthened. Item number two talks about PUD. I would like a stronger statement that makes, makes a statement that the planning and zoning commission strongly recommends, most strongly recommends, adopting a requirement that a PUD, not a limited PUD, but a, that the P and Z strongly recommends adopting a requirement that a full plea PUD approach be adopted. I'll, I'll throw this one out there, you know, I think...
Hold on for a second, John. Let them catch up, I think.
Sure.
Did you get that? Okay.
We heard some discussion tonight about item seven in there, and I think I was going to say we require the trail on the river. I think it's, it's already there. I think, I would like a statement, something that says, we would recommend no large boat launch, only a launching opportunity for light kayaks and canoe kind of things. And I would also recommend, or throw out a recommendation, and this is one you may not all agree, and maybe it's tightening this too much, but, you know, that, that the P and Z recommends limited or eliminating, maybe we give a little flexibility, limited or eliminating any residential on the shoreline from the BSNSF ownership line to the north, south to the river. And that's my motion.
Okay, I just want to make sure staff could read back to you. So we've, we've got that. I'm putting you on the spot.
Yes, I think so, and Shannon may have to help as well.
John, listen to...
So, under the item two, where we're talking about the PUDs, the P and Z most strongly recommends adopting a requirement that a full PUD approval be adopted, or no, PUD, can't read my handwriting.
I, I just, the, the notion there is to strengthen that, rather than say staff recommends if a PUD is required, just to make the statement that this P and Z...
Go ahead.
Would, would most highly recommend that a PUD approach be, be adopted, period.
Across the entire site.
Yes.
Because if they break this up into two big lots...
No, no, I agree, Lynn.
We've got to have it across the whole site.
Entire site.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to make sure that staff has got this, depending on where it goes.
We appreciate that.
Okay.
The next one was condition seven, talking about the trail. So we may want to clarify a little bit more, just that the trail should be along the river and then recommend no boat launch, but a light boat launch for canoes, kayaks, paddleboard, et cetera would be appropriate.
A non-motorized boat launch would be the best description.
Non-motorized, we'll clarify that. You had also mentioned previously that third place.
I would add one, that last one, thank you. That's the one I left off after, you know, we talked, I talked about the limited or eliminating residential from the BNSF line to the north to the river, that strip, no res in there. The last one, then you, that we, that the visioning process, visioning and master planning process, look at welcoming third place opportunities along the waterfront.
So that's kind of a number 11.
Yeah, that's a number 11.
It's a number 11.
I think it's 12. So 11 was the...
Oh, it's 12.
Oh, it's 12, yeah, residential.
Limited or eliminating the residential development south from the BNSF right away to the river.
Commissioner Ingles, I got to comment, that sounds so much better than I want a place where I can go drink a beer.
Stagger home.
It does sound better, a little more legalistic.
Okay. So Steph, you're comfortable with what John made as additional conditions?
Yes, and just to clarify, so on your condition 11, so you did want it to read limited or eliminate?
Or eliminating all residential on the waterfront.
Or eliminating all residential development.
Limiting or eliminating.
What was that now?
Limiting or eliminating all residential. So it's either a small amount...
I, I, let's just, I'd go strong enough to just...
John's making a motion.
Just say it's my motion and you can amend the motion. So for now, it's recommend, the, the planning and zoning commission recommends the elimination of, or preclusion of, of any residential within that lineage strip that I described.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a first with some additional conditions and recommendations. We have some discussions or adding more to that. Okay, did I get a second on John's motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion by Ingles, a second by Luther. Can we have a roll call?
Fleming?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Mandell?
Yes.
Okay, so, A-2-17 zoning prior to annexation of a 46 acre parcel to a C-17 is passed. And I again thank everyone for their patience and time they spent here tonight listening to us have this debate. But again, it is very important that we all do this because this is a, what was it again? Once in an opportu, once in a lifetime opportunity or whatever it is, but it's very important that we do this. Go to city council, speak again if you care to, and I will call for motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we will see you back here in September for the next planning and zoning. We have a workshop.
August workshop.
August 22nd for the workshop.
That's a workshop.
4:00 PM here.
Yeah. But our next official meeting would be in September, which would be start of football season, okay? I got that in for you.
Good, Tom, that is a gun for breath.
All right, good night, everyone.
Monday night, or Sunday night, Kabel?